Right on the bell, I like that. All right, I'd like to call the Village of Cottage Grove. Village Board Trustees meeting to order. It is Monday, August 1st at 6:30 PM. We are holding this as a hybrid meeting, meaning that we are both on Zoom, with a Zoom link at the top of the agenda. We are also here in person at the Village Hall. There is also an audio call-in number listed at the top of the agenda as well for those who choose that means to engage. With that, I think we have a quorum based on looking down around the room. The agenda was properly posted and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for keeping us on our toes. All right, we'll start off. Then, item four is public appearances, public's opportunity to speak. So, we do have a few forms filled out for folks in the room. We'll start with those. And then, a number of other people who filled out forms as well may not wish to speak but do wish to hear their voice heard. So, with that, I'll start with Cindy, Cal Nelson, 233 Forest and Drive. And Cindy, please take it away. Yeah, pull it towards you.
How's that?
Pull it.
Yeah.
How's that?
I think it's good. I think I hear you.
Hello.
There you go.
As was discussed and approved in the July 20th meeting, the Library Board unanimously approved the location of the proposed library, which I'm happy to provide a schematic if you don't know what I'm referring to. The Library Board has been engaged with all Dane County Library Directors, South Central Library Services, and the Dane County Library System throughout this process. We've really learned that the library is the heart of a growing community and thus, our public library should be visible, welcoming, and an inclusive place. During our research, there were common underlying factors when considering ideal locations that included the proximity to schools, walkability, and visibility. The proposed land site is nearly seven acres and is in close proximity to two schools, grades three through eights. Multiple subdivisions, developments, and new developments, and it is easily accessible via highways, roads, sidewalks, and bike paths. Additionally, room to grow and expand in the future. Think 20, 30, 40 years. Available parking and outdoor spaces was favored among all of the library directors we spoke to. For example, other Dane County libraries have expressed the importance of outdoor programming space for a vibrant library community. Programming space is probably the most valuable and important feature a library can have. The proposed library is currently estimated at 25,000 square feet, which considering additional outdoor programming space and parking to meet the needs of both patrons, staff, and maximum program room capacity. South Central's building and design consultant estimates a minimum of four acres for a library. The physical library structure is approximately 10% of the site. Parking, driveways, about 30%. Landscaping setbacks amenities, 60% comprise the rest of the land. Parking is a special consideration. The total number of parking spaces will be one for each staff member plus one-half the number of adult seats in the building. This number would provide enough parking spaces to provide for one car space per two seats in the community room, which we are estimating at 100-person capacity. So, local codes may dictate a higher square footage be allocated to drives and parking. I believe this is the case in Cottage Grove. So, consider the patrons of a future public library in Cottage Grove. You have parents with young children, all the way up to the elderly, that need an accessible building. A library that is not easily accessible will not maximize use or provide maximum service to all its residents. A library that is not well-used does not generate operational revenue. So, the proposed land has been managed by the Friends of the Cottage Grove Library Incorporated since 2008, although originally it was purchased by the village after the exploration of 30 parcels of land and eight existing buildings, alternative sites. The Friends also want you to acknowledge that there are stipulations. The proposed library land must be used for a public library. I will acknowledge that there is some benefit to incorporating a library into a civic campus. For example, this may include multi-use meeting spaces, collaborations with Parks and Rec, shared programming space. But it's also important to consider a couple of other things, which include building requirements necessary for libraries. So, libraries require a live load of 150 pounds per square foot, which is the highest of all structures, including parking structures. So, repurposing existing spaces can be difficult. Libraries are unique in their lighting, their flex space, and their overall needs. And while building size and scope and construction costs may differ depending on location, operating budgets will likely remain close to the same. So, within a civic campus, future expansions, or even the design of the proposed 25,000-square-foot library may mean needing to build up. So, a two-story library has a lot of issues as well. This includes increased cost to build as well as increased cost of staff. So, forced fit into a civic campus site may need a smaller, taller footprint that limits capacity and increased cost. So, a smaller footprint also may not meet set standards and limit eligibility for tax reimbursements. So, the Library Board has worked hard to carefully consider and discuss these issues. They've also worked to understand how libraries must meet Wisconsin and Dane County standards and operate the needs of the entire community. They have worked to understand the gaps that exist, the significant gaps that exist in Cottage Grove, and how a library can meet the needs of its residents. The Library Board will continue to adjust numbers and estimates as we gather new information and as guidance becomes available. We are ready to work creatively on this project with you and your staff. So, thank you for your careful consideration of these important topics and thank you to your dedication to the community as a whole. Respectfully, myself, this letter is also signed by Tracy Philippi, who's the Friends of the Cottage Grove Library President.
All right, thanks Cindy. Next, Stephen Wall. Did I get that right, Stephen?
It's, uh, wait.
Wait, sir.
Is it common, your comments?
Um.
I've been called a lot worse.
Not here.
First, let me say, when I was approached to apply to be on the board, I thought this would be a really easy job, read a few things, help give some feedback. I was encouraged to apply for my love of education, my belief that a community that's well-educated, has the opportunity to continue to learn, is a stronger community and stronger democracy. So, thank you for allowing me to be appointed to this. It's a lot more work than I thought. And I also want to recognize that this sliver of work that we're doing is one sliver amongst the larger pie that you're all dealing with. So, definitely recognize and appreciate that. That being said, I'd like to encourage the Village Board to allow the Library Board to continue our work on identifying the true costs of building and operating a library by reaching out, finding additional revenue sources, and just collecting the additional information that we've been working on for the past year. Libraries are not typically funded only through taxes. Typically, there are other ways to get operational funding and funding to build the facility through capital campaigns, donations, and grants. And we were already talking with some of the experts at the UW Madison High School, Library School, for some ideas around those things. Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction has identified three tiers of libraries per the Wisconsin Public Library Standard. I thought they were at version five, they're at version six, and there might be a version seven. I haven't found that one yet. I think we need to, again, getting facts around that. Still being three tiers, the first one being the basic tier, where it's basically checking in, checking out books, and having some programs. The second tier is expanding those programs and expanding the facilities capacity. And the third tier being probably the most comprehensive programs, staffing, and other things. Obviously, it needs to be an iterative process as we identify funds. But I think as a community, we have to decide what tier of library we want to go towards and how quickly. Cost feasibility study should be completed determining any proposed location to determine the true cost of building a Tier One, Tier Two, or even expanding to a Tier Three library while meeting the other state, federal, and federal regulatory standards. I'm looking forward to the completion of the capital campaign study that will inform us of what some of the possibilities are, as well as the opportunity to collect more information before we make any fast decisions on where to place a library. I will go on record that I've been a strong, I continue to be a strong advocate for leaving the library where we currently have land through the Friends of the Library, which has been dedicated solely for this purpose for a lot of the reasons Cindy has already stated. I appreciate your time and your direction.
All right, thanks Stephen. All right, we had a number of other residents and non-residents fill out forms to speak or not speak, or just to have their voices heard. So, I'll run through these. If any of those individuals are on the Zoom or in the room, I don't think any of them are in the room, but, and still wish to speak, please raise your hand and let us know. And then, we'll open it up for any other public comment. First up, and again, no particular order, just grabbed them as they came in. Eric Braun at 426 Knight and Gale Lane, he is a village resident, is in favor of the location of the library. These are all related to the library location. Next, Jennifer Braun, again, same address, in favor of the location of the library. Britt Leach at 723 Willow Run Street, in favor of the location of the library, and also a village resident. Michelle Hartner at 204 Don Gill Drive, again, in favor of the location of the library. Virginia Dalton at 404 Coyle Parkway, again, in favor of the location of the library. Kelly Atkinson, 620 Cottage Grove Court, again, in favor of the location of the library, village resident. Emily Kurtzton, excuse me, Kurtzton, at 203 Dunko Court, excuse me, again, village resident, in favor of the location of the library. Sharon Byer, 304 West Parkview Street, again, village resident, and also in favor of the location of the library. Gracie Byer, same address, in favor of the location of the library. Winferi at 725 Terrace Ridge Drive, again, village resident, and in favor of the location of the library. Robin Schmeckel, 430 Clearbrook Terrace, again, village resident, in favor of the location of the library. Jody Fidler at 805 Damascus Trail, again, excuse me, 808, I believe, Damascus Trail, in favor of the location of the library and a village resident. Megan Swanson at 5263 Bass Road, not a village resident, but also in favor of the location of the library. With that, is anybody else on the Zoom that would like to speak on any subject? Okay. All right, then we will move on to item five. It's discussing, consider, meeting minutes from regular Village Board meeting held on July 18th. Any questions, comments, or consideration for motion?
Make a motion to review in a minute for us to present it.
Thank you, Heidi, thank you David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Item six, unfinished business. This relates to our 2022-2023 prioritization process, step five, review top priorities. Matt was kind enough to put in a memo in the packet to walk us through that. Matt, I don't know if you want to go through anything here or open it up to board members for discussion.
Sure. Generally, the board takes a closer look at anywhere from, you know, the top five or six priorities. We could do more or less, but that's what we've been doing the past few years. So, this memo includes the top three with anticipation of doing the next three at the next meeting, which leads into the financial management plan in September. So, this process is really just identifying things that staff are currently working on so the board can get an idea of how there might be some existing alignment between current work and the new goals that were established, even if some of the priorities are carryovers from previous years. And then, that also allows for, if there's something ahead of the budget process that the board would like to address sooner rather than later. Not everything necessarily takes a big financial commitment, so there could be something regarding the priorities that you would like to look at sooner rather than later. So, we can do that as well. So, the first three tonight are Village Library, which was ranked number one, Village Facilities and Staffing, which is number two, and then Sustainability at three. So, outlined what were, and I wouldn't say it's perfectly inclusive. I didn't reach out to staff to check on everything. It was just off the top of my head and from looking through performance goals and things like that that we're currently working on. And then, I follow that up with the individual narratives from board members that you all submitted so you can be reminded what was put in that way. And then, just a couple of questions to consider. Are the current staff goals, objectives, efforts adequate to meet the board's priority for this topic? Are there initiatives, objectives, projects related to a top priority that the board would like added to an agenda and addressed prior to establishing the upcoming budget? So, just a couple of things to think through. Otherwise, you know, there's not any action needed on any of this. It's just to discuss things a little bit more and just kind of leads in nicely to the budget considerations coming up in the future, near future.
All right, thanks Matt. Any questions, comments from board members?
With the...
Yeah.
With, thank you for putting this together, Matt. And when there's consideration being given to expand the plans, I'll look at 10 years for major capital projects and borrowing purposes. What does that look like? Is that being considered because these are regular projects that we previously had? So, we need to expand that into the future and see how it will work going forward?
So, I would say it's not necessarily a change. I mean, we have, depending on the department, we might have, staff might have 15 or 20 years out. So, I think it just might be beneficial for literally just a slide or two that we work with elders on to just show what's coming up beyond the five years. So, you know, the board would still just be approving a five-year plan. But it would just show, especially for the larger projects that we're going to be borrowing for, to see what's coming up and to, you know, manage that appropriately. Some communities do up to 20 years and it's just so hard to... It's hard enough to forecast at five, but we wouldn't be spending any engineering money on getting estimates beyond the five years. So, this would just be really a shot in the dark staff guess. But just thought that would be beneficial.
I think that makes sense. Considering we do tend to push things that are at the five-year mark out anyway.
Correct. And a perfect example is the Village Facilities and Staffing. So, the consultant's recommendation on that was to start Phase One of an eight-year project. It's three phases over eight years. And they were recommending that architectural and engineering costs, work starts next year with construction on Phase One in 2024. We've been discussing as staff, like, trying to figure out what reasonably could be the furthest that we push that out. And we were thinking four years. The back end of that, being that it's a three-phase, eight-year project, maybe it gets condensed a little bit. But showing a larger window than trying to, quote-unquote, "jam" everything into a five-year window probably just makes more sense from a planning perspective on large considerations like that. So... Yeah, it won't cost us any more money. Staff's already doing it. We just have to add it into slides.
Any other comments, questions? All right, thanks Matt. Moving on then to new business. First up is to discuss and consider disallowing a claim, WM000131120062, by Charlie Rogers for damages at his property located at 221 West Reynolds Street caused by a baseball hit from the Fireman's Park on May 1st, 2022. I don't know, you want to comment on this, Larry?
I think we had mentioned to the person who made the claim that they would have an opportunity, is that...
Yes.
Are they here?
Yep.
Charlie was here.
And I would go with that first.
Okay. Charlie, would you like to? Sure.
As far as the facts of the incident, it's all in the reports. There's nothing really to add. I just want to add a kind of a personal statement about how this has all kind of gone down. May 1st, it happened. It's on our video cameras, et cetera. There's no doubt in that. First, I want to summarize that the whole incident, what it's meant to my family, and that's in a word, disappointing. For three months, we've tried to resolve this incident. First, we talked to the hometown baseball team and they referred us to Parks. And O'Shaughnessy was as helpful as possible. It basically said it had to go to the village. So, we took it to the village. And Matt referred us to your insurer. They denied it on what a state statute of discretionary immunity, right? So, then we went back to the firemen. And the firemen said, no, it's up to the baseball team. So, basically, it's been everybody has, it's not my problem. My family and I, except for my military service, have lived next to the Fireman's Park since the early 60s. And in that time, whenever the door's been left open or the field lights have been left on, we've always been the one to contact the Parks Department to get it taken care of. We've also had numerous police contacts. Whenever there's trouble in the park, we're the ones to call. We truly enjoy living next to the park. I've lived there with my backyard when I grew up. This is the first time we've ever had any substantial damage done that we've asked for reimbursement on. Your insurance stated in the letter that the village has discretionary immunity in this. Our hope is that you'll use that and award us on the damages. And I'd be glad to answer any questions if there are.
I thought that was a...
Yeah, go ahead.
I think that was a really good way to describe the choice that you have tonight. With the last comment there about discretionary immunity. The village can decide to pay for what it chooses to pay for. And then, there's, you know, there's certain things where it's really up to you. And then, there's other things where you've got an obligation. And in this case, in my opinion, there's no obligation for the reasons stated by the insurer in the letter that's in your packet. Basically, you see the use of the word ministerial duty, and I think it's worth just explaining what that means for generally as things that might impact the village. Basically, the way the law works, other than vehicle-related issues, your decisions that you make and actions that you take as staff and as a board running a municipality are broken into two categories. One of those is our ministerial duties. And if you fail to follow through on a ministerial duty, then you can be liable up to $50,000 is the cap. If it's a, the other category of actions is our legislative decisions. And there's zero liability for those. There's full immunity under the statutes for those. And that's what your insurer explained when they used the word ministerial, that there was no ministerial duty to have a net or something that would stop that baseball from leaving the property. And I agree with that. So, there's no obligation to pay for this. I think that it is possible that someone else is liable here. It's not my job to get into that. But the village, in this case, I agree with the insurer that this is not a ministerial duty, in which case, you're into that legislative decision of whether you put up a, whether, first of all, whether you allow baseball in the park at all. Second of all, what you're going to do to sort of protect the boundaries of the park. And you don't have an obligation to do any of those. So, you know, if the village decided to pay for this window, it could. But there's no obligation. And so, our recommendation from a legal perspective is to deny the claim unless you choose to do that. I would write a letter officially denying the claim. If you do decide to do that, we wouldn't use the standard form that the insurer sent. We'd like to add a little bit more detail into that. So, it's really a voluntary choice on your part.
Thanks, Larry. Questions, comments from board members?
Charlie, you said you've lived in that house since when?
Since the 60s.
And is this the first window break since?
Yes.
Early 60s?
I mean, I picked up a few baseballs and a lot of trash. But other than that, there's never been anything else. I mean, if the ball was hit over 400 feet. So, from home plate to the roof of my house is quite a distance.
If we were to pay for the window, would it go through our insurance? Or would we need to come up with the funds?
You would need to come up with the funds.
Did you submit a claim to your homeowner's insurance for it?
Yeah, they're pursuing the baseball team, right. Because that's what your insurer told us we had to do.
I guess I'm a little confused. Why is the, why is the baseball team referred you to our Parks Department?
I could talk to that. In these situations, people really don't know who's responsible for what. And obviously, nobody wants to be responsible. So, that's fairly typical. It's like, you know, they're not, they don't have their own legal advisors, you know?
I have another follow-up for you, Larry. If we were to pay the claim, how would that obligate us in the future for similar type claims?
It would only obligate you as far as creating an argument for someone. There wouldn't be any kind of a precedent set that you would have to follow. But also, you know, it may be worthwhile to see what happens with the homeowner's insurance working on this. It might be something that you might consider maybe not taking final action on, waiting to hear how that plays out. Because, you know, to pay something that, you know, I'll give you an example. If I hit that baseball, by the way, I cannot hit a baseball anymore if I ever could. But if I hit that baseball, my umbrella coverage for my homeowner's policy, even though I'm at the park, would cover that. You know, and there's likely to be somebody who's at fault here. You may choose to just, you know, maybe not put it to bed and see how that goes and get a report back. that goes and get a report back. But the way that it's supposed to work in these cases is, that's why you have an insurance company that will then go out and find and make the assessment as to who's, who's responsible, and then go seek contribution. It, it's not unlikely that it'll turn out that somebody will, will have to be responsible for that. In which case, that, that all stops if, if the village makes them whole, and then, you know, they're not going to get, you know, double dip, not that, certainly not asking for that. That's another option you could consider.
Is there any kind of waiver or anything that groups have to sign when they use or rent a village facility?
Not for, not for baseball field. Part of shelter reservation, yes.
So a lot of times you have, like, the organization itself will have waivers signed by the participants so that if they get hurt, that there wouldn't, wouldn't be an issue. Really, we don't recommend any kind of a immunity, you know, immunity agreement when the Parks Department allows someone to use a facility because we don't have, there's nothing to immunize us from, right? Because, again, we're not responsible for this. So, you know, you don't want to do more paper than you have to, and so we don't recommend that because it's all in the ministry, not in the ministerial duty category. It would just be more work for staff, and it wouldn't get the village anywhere.
Charlie, do you have any sense of how long it will be before you know the results of your home insurance seeking reimbursement?
Only from what we've talked to them on the phone, and again, from the letter that your insurer sent to us, their only, from what we've understood, is their only option is to go after the Hometown Team, which is, I mean, how much money do they make, if any? So, I mean, my insurer is more than happy to pay the, the claim, but then I have a $1,000 deductible.
Sure.
So, I'm out either way.
I was going to, I was going to say that, that, you know, whether or not your insurer can collect from someone else doesn't, under standard homeowner policies, doesn't dictate whether you get paid. Homeowner's insurance has to pay whether they get made whole by someone else, or whether they would even try for the difference between the cost of the window and the $1,000 deductible. They might not even try for that. But I always have to be careful not to extend my legal advice beyond this community or this board, but, but the insurance companies required minus the deductible. That's what insurance is for. So as we're talking about this and what happens with insurance, whether or not someone else makes their, his insurer whole is really not relevant. It's a question of whether they pay the claim or find some reason to argue that they don't have to.
Charlie, are you concerned this will happen again?
No.
This is a one-time, only, never-to-happen-again kind of scenario?
Well, I've lived there 60 years plus. And I've never had a baseball go over my roof and hit on the backside of the roof and then bounce into my studio window. As I told many people, if that guy hit it that far, he shouldn't be in Hometown. He should be in the majors.
I guess I, Larry, I'm kind of with you, right? Like, we don't necessarily have to put this to bed right now, right? Because your, your homeowner's is kind of, there's some due diligence.
They have no problem paying it.
Okay.
I mean, that's what home, that's what the insurance is for. I'm just, I'm out $1,000 bucks.
I think, I think what we're, what we learned after I made that recommendation is that we already know the answer.
Yep.
If, if you don't pay it, he's going to run it through the insurance, and they're going to pay it. So kicking it down the road probably doesn't make sense anymore despite me making that recommendation.
Okay. I guess the, the two issues that I, I mean, again, you, you've lived there 60 years. You don't have any concern. I don't live next to a baseball park, right? So I can't help but wonder, ask Sean, like, I'm just curious on your take on this situation from a Parks and Rec perspective, like, of this happening again? Because that's just where my head's at right now.
I don't think it'll ever happen again. It was a very, very windy day, and it was a really high pop fly that hit, and it just blew it over into Charlie's house. And I'm sure, like you said, he's picked up balls here and there, but it was, it was kind of a freak day.
Okay.
This happens a lot with municipal golf courses.
Yeah.
Very frequently. Especially when I'm golfing.
Would an option be to pay the $1,000 deductible versus the whole?
Sure.
Like, so I work for attorneys, and like, I understand about property damage and insurance and deductibles and disallowance of claims. And we're, I'm sorry, I, I don't think that the village is responsible for this. I think that the Hometown Talent, that they, they're the ones that are responsible in this instance. And if, if it was me paying out of my pocket, like, I would, but considering this is taxpayer dollars, I don't feel comfortable voting in favor of paying for this. So that's where I'm at.
I am interested to hear what the results of Hometown Talent comes up with. If, if they are, I mean, if they hit the baseball and, you know, maybe we have to review how they use the park or something along those lines. If they aren't ready to be responsible for any damages, I mean, I understand the, the order of action. And if they're required, I think that's the other thing, and it's very rare. So I'm, it's a, it's a very rare. I said, yeah, on it, it's, um...
So I'm hearing perhaps we wait and see as a board to see how the Charlie's family's insurance takes this and where they take it, and then review that at that point, you know, hopefully whoever hit the ball has an umbrella package and, you know, compensates for the damage that was caused, and then review it at that point because, for, for consideration. Is that what I'm hearing, or other than, maybe Melissa?
I think that, I mean, I'd like to see, I'd like to see Hometown Talent held accountable. So I don't want to just get them off the hook for it. To Heidi's point, it is our park, and I understand that, too. So I would like to see if Hometown Talent will, will pay it, or the hitter, the player who, if they have insurance.
We, we could even communicate that, too, if you, if the board would be interested. We could, we could vote to communicate to them if the board would like to see them.
As a hometown talent.
I just think about, if my 12-year-old had hit the ball...
You'd sign him up for the majors.
Sign him up for the majors. But like, I'd, I'd walk over to your house and say, my son hit, broke your window. I'd like to pay for it, right? So like, I think that's where I'm, I'm with you here, you know, and Hometown Talent is, they're adults, right? So I mean, like, even more so, if you break the window, even though freak accident, right? Like, it's, I mean...
Can I add something?
Yeah.
Um, I will not be contacting Hometown again. They are outright hostile towards us.
Okay.
To the point of, the firemen basically had to bail me out last time because a couple of the players were upset. How's that? About me even wanting to claim some money from them for their actions. So if you guys would like to discuss it with them, I am definitely not going over there again.
That's really disappointing that they treated you like that. I'm sorry.
Well, it's, it's life, dear. I mean, excuse me, it's life.
No, but I mean, they're adults. Like, this is an adult situation, and so like, it's, it's unfortunate and regrettable that they act that way.
Right. And Pat, and Pat, I believe is one of the head people. He acknowledged it immediately when it happened. He's been very good to work with. It's just some of the other players are not quite as mature, let's say.
Young, young adults.
They're all pretty old over there.
So I think that's all the more reason that they should get something more, a little bit firmer from a legal perspective, from the consideration from the board that we think that Hometown Talent should make this whole.
What are our recourse at all as far as, I mean, if, I don't necessarily want...
What's our stick?
Well, yeah, I mean...
It's not letting them use the ball.
Yep.
Well, that's what, I mean, if they aren't going to be respectful of their neighbors...
Or requiring them to put up some sort of a bond or something, you know, or, you know, having some individual personal guarantees from whoever wants to set up. There's, there's a number of things you could do moving forward.
Could we say that in the letter? Their actions today may influence how we...
I think, I think that you can, I like, I always like to take the step to enforcement of, you know, this was discussed, and it's, you know, maybe a unanimous board decision that I think it's important that this be covered to your responsibility, and then see where it goes before the heavier stick comes up. I mean, Hometown, Hometown is kind of an important part of our, you know, of the community, and so, you know, you'd, you'd hope that on receipt of that, it sounds like while there was a bad experience with some of the players, this path was, was, you know, probably doesn't understand their obligations. Like to give them a chance to do the right thing before it hits, if you mind.
But for tonight, would we motion to the table for the...
No, we'd motion the action to communicate that they're responsible for this.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we requested our legal team draft a letter to send to Hometown Talent. They're expecting our request that they be held accountable and pay whatever, you know what I'm saying.
Second.
And pay the, the amount.
Communicate a request to...
Yes, communicate a request that they pay for the damages.
Okay. I really hope Lisa puts end of whatever, end of the minute.
You know what I'm saying.
You know what I'm saying.
So the other thing I would say is that, thank you, man, is that we have a certain period of time to make a decision on whether to disallow a claim. And just so you know, you never have to disallow a claim, but if you don't, there's a long period of time in which someone could bring a lawsuit against the village. If you do within 120 days of the filing of the claim last, last May, then there's a six-month period. So your insurer always wants you, if you're not going to pay a claim, to deny it so that it triggers the shorter statute of limitations, and the whole thing gets put to bed one way or another at a later time scale. So I know your insurer would prefer that you deny the claim. You probably won't have maybe one more opportunity to do that before the 120 days.
Can, can then, can we amend your, your motion to ask for an answer back within a certain amount of time?
Well, I think, I think what I would recommend is that, you know, at this point, you're not, you, you don't, you don't have a legal obligation to pay this, so deny the claim. And then if, depending on what happens with these communications, you can always still, it doesn't mean you're foregoing the opportunity to choose to pay for the, the deductible or the full amount. Denying the claim doesn't change that trajectory. It's just a sort of the handshake deal we have with our insurers, that when we don't think there's legal liability, we generally deny those claims. So I would, I would suggest that you deny it. If you're not going to pay it, decide to pay it tonight, you deny it. Be done with that, and then you can progress. You can, you can make a decision to give them $1,000 10 years from now if you want. There's nothing precluding that.
Okay. Then I'll amend my motion to deny the request for disallowing the claim and et cetera.
You want to deny it?
The letter. Denied, right? Did I say it right? I'm going to...
You said deny it.
Didn't, thank you. I'm going to stop making the...
It's okay. It's good. And then I, the only thing I would recommend is Hometown Talent respond within accident. I would pick a short timeframe.
Okay.
I'd, Larry, 30, 20 days, 21 days? 14 days, I think.
Um, you know, is, are you guys on the motion?
No, because we had to vote on it, actually.
Well, but I got a comment.
Okay, discussion, okay, thank you.
Okay. But the only problem with denying the claim is that if, then he has to file a lawsuit if he did want to pursue it still, and within that six months, right?
Yeah, you can still pay it. It doesn't keep you from paying it.
Right, but it would preclude him from doing anything after the six months if he didn't file a lawsuit.
That's right. Against the village.
As opposed to three years.
Or whatever it ends up being for this particular type of...
Yeah.
You'd know that actually better than I would.
I think it's three.
And, and our insurance, we, the recommendations are followed. Should we end up, if, if there would be a lawsuit, they would defend us and cover that as part of our insurance as well.
Right. But the, the issue that I'm getting at is by disallowing the claim, you've just made it for, harder for him to go after...
Us.
Right? Because to file a lawsuit on this type of claim is expensive.
But I thought we wouldn't even be, we wouldn't be filing a claim with our insurance. We would just be reimbursing.
No, no, I'm saying that he would have to file a lawsuit against us and be more expensive for him if he were to pursue it.
No, that's, that doesn't, that's no different. I mean, it's just how long he has to file a lawsuit.
Yeah.
He could still come back and he had another agenda.
Charlie, let me ask you.
That's right.
Let me, does this, are you okay with this? Is this...
Well, I'm out $1,000, so I am not going to file a lawsuit to recover $1,000.
Okay. I think, and I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I just want to make sure, we want to make you whole, and we want this to, you know, do, make this right.
Well, I mean...
At least I want it.
I guess we'll see down the road how it happens.
Yeah.
I mean, I appreciate the conversation. I really took way more time than needed to be of your busy schedule, so make the motion and let's get it over.
You ought to run this meeting, Charlie. You do well. Nice job at utilities. All right. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor, then?
Aye.
Aye. David.
David, thank you.
Sorry, I usually try to say it. Motion, anybody opposed, anybody staying? I think a motion carries. I think everybody heard, everybody that. All right. Next up is discuss and consider a liquor license. Thank you, Charlie, for coming out. Discuss and consider a liquor license application from Dave's Family Foods, Inc., aka Piggly Wiggly, for the licensing year of July 2022 through June 2023. Lisa?
So this is just a application. There were no issues with the background, and the closing, I believe, is mid-August for Piggly Wiggly. So it'll be straightforward.
Just transferring.
Yeah, so it'll be new owners. So we have to go through this process to issue their license.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license application for Dave's Family Foods, Inc., aka Piggly Wiggly, for licensing year July 2022 through June 2023. I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license application for Day's Family Foods, Inc., AKA Piggly Wiggly for licensing year July 2022 through June 2023.
I'll second.
All right. Thanks, David. Thanks, Brittany. Uh, go ahead.
Was it attached to the agenda? It was not. I did not. Normally it would be on a list of a spreadsheet and it, there was no issue. So there was really nothing to send.
Okay. I just want to make sure I wasn't missing something.
You were not.
All right. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next up, uh, to discuss and consider block party application for Jesse Ryback, uh, for August. Any questions, comments there? Lisa, you got a?
Nope.
It's pretty straightforward. Block off the road. Have a good time. I think it was two to eight or something like that, if I remember right. Yeah, a little stretch.
I'll make a motion to approve the block party application for Jesse Ryback for August 13, 2022, for example, in our package.
Second. Thank you, Heidi. Thank you, David. Uh, any further discussion?
So then when that gets, with the block party on Wheel Bridge, do, are there, are they going to have like cones or something up or?
They'd have to work with the police department or, or public works to probably put a, a formal barricade with the black and orange, something more significant, because otherwise somebody will, we wouldn't want to have anybody driving into that area if folks are out in a vote. Is that correct? Right.
I'm just not used to it being right in the middle of a street like that. That's fairly well traveled. So. That, that's good. I'm glad it's going to be blocked off appropriately. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Having, having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right. Uh, next we have reports from village boards, commissions and committees, starting off with emergency preparedness committee. Uh, we have a discussing consider on this, uh, for approving the resolution 2022 dash eight, one, eight. Uh, resolution appointing the Dane County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan for 2022 update. This Matt, Matt Lieutenant Wagner is on.
Yeah. So this is, um, just the final step in the, um, the year-long project that we've been working on. Um, so our annex was permuted by the council's management. They didn't have any recommendations or changes. Uh, so to achieve the final goal, to have FEMA approve the full Dane County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, uh, we need to put our annex into resolution and, uh, forward that on to Dane County and then we would be done with our section when it comes to this.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Uh, any questions for Matt regarding this? For the plan? If not, then it's a discussing, consider.
I will move to approve resolution 2022 dash eighteen regarding adopting the Dane County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan with the 2022 update.
I'll second.
All right. Thanks, Melissa. Thanks, Sarah. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Matt, anything else you want to cover regarding the preparedness, uh, meeting?
No, sir. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. And that was, I think from my recollection, most of the bulk of the meeting last time, right?
I don't, I don't remember when we met last. I think I missed it.
Oh, maybe.
But the agenda's not on there. So I think that was from before maybe.
It was.
Okay.
So that, John, just to, just to clarify, this is, this is about the ongoing project that JJ Larson and I have been working on for the better part of, um, of the year now. Uh, we just had it under the emergency government committee, the preparedness committee, because that's where it initially started. So it wasn't new business, old business. It escaped from the committee. So.
Okay.
There wasn't an actual meeting anyone missed. It just came out of that committee about a year ago.
Okay. So, thank you, Melissa. My mic, it all blends together for me. So, um, so next up is, um, the library board. And here we have a discussing, consider a recommendation for the library board to designate a land currently owned by the Friends of the Cottage Grove Library to be designated as the site for the proposed future village library. Uh, there are also other items in, I know that, that particular meeting, uh, as well. And that, uh, agenda was attached. So David.
Yep. So JJ, keep me honest here as we go. Um, so I'll kind of recap, uh, the meeting and then we'll, we'll talk about the discussion. So we met on Wednesday, July 20th at eight PM. Uh, it was a late, late night. Um, we talked about, uh, the financial feasibility study, but Sweeney Group is continuing and should wrap up as Steph said, uh, next month. Uh, we then talked about an update on library, local library visits and data collection and outreach. That continues, um, lots of stuff going on there. We then talked about the return on investment calculator. That's, I believe it's Sun Prairie's library. Has on their website. So it kind of gives you an idea. You can go there and see what your return on investment would be, uh, for any local library. It's not just Sun Prairie. Um, and then we did a discussing, consider recommendations on the library project timeline. Um, there was a lot of conversation around this. Ultimately, we did approve the timeline as a library board, um, with a, um, uh, I, I won't recap all of it just because it's in the, it's in the minutes, but, uh, ultimately with an, uh, an opening of a library in 2026. Then we did a discussing, consider about budget recommendations. Um, JJ worked with Ellers to generate, um, uh, finance, uh, I mean, a financial outlook or financial management plan, I guess we'll call it. Um, you've all seen that, um, those numbers. Uh, there was a lot of lively conversation around that. Um, there's, there's been continued conversations since the meeting around those numbers and, um, some work that we could possibly do to kind of, uh, shave those numbers or make the project less expensive. So, so that, um, there's more work to be done there. Uh, and then we talked about several items specifically around, um, there were two of them actually. Um, one was a recommendation for staff for an advisory referendum in fall of 2022, um, for the architectural and engineering work. Ultimately, we did not make a motion on that one. So we, I guess we passed on that one. And then we talked about, um, an update on the facility needs study, which led to the, the motion tonight, which was around the discussion of, um, designating the current land owned by the Friends of the Cottage Grove to be designated as the site of the proposed future village library. Um, there's been lots of continued conversation around that, um, hence all the support, uh, and all the outreach that we've seen as of late around that and the site. Um, there's been continued, there's been follow-on meetings since then around that. And, um, some of this is, in my opinion, there's, there's the budget, there's the timeline, and then there's the site. And then, um, you know, ultimately I think, uh, there's questions around the numbers that were generated around, um, the capex around building the building and then the operating and, uh, the opex as well. Because ultimately the square footage of the building dictates how much staff you need. So one impacts the other. I'd like to see some more work done around, uh, the numbers. Um, I know that, that the library board has plans for next year to continue to do that, but I would like to, to kind of do this. I'd like to start even this year, um, what I, what I'm calling phase zero, um, is to have, I would like to see JJ work with Deb, um, who's the building coordinator at Dane County Library. And then I'd also, uh, South Central, excuse me, thank you, uh, at South Central. Um, and then I'd also like to see, um, you know, I'd like to see an architect involved. Um, doesn't have to be FGM. It could be any architectural firm. But at least get it, help us put a, a finer point on the numbers that, that JJ worked to put together. I'll stop there. Any questions, thoughts, concerns?
I, I will just note that, um, I think our library board has done a lot of work on the numbers and has worked with Deb. So I certainly don't see any problem with JJ reaching out to Deb at all, but I will say that's kind of going over the same information that's already been gone. Which is pretty, uh, extensive already, but I think it's, um, continued to be looked at as a good thing, um, as far as that goes. But I don't know that we have, like, I don't know exactly all that you're saying to start this year. I don't know that there's the funding to do those things this year either. But I'm all for starting right away.
And I, just to put a finer point on to, um, in terms of working with Deb, we actually, JJ and a few of us met today. It's actually going over the, the space needs worksheet. Um, right now we're at just a little under 25,000 square feet. Um, and I think that ultimately it all starts, everything starts and ends at that, that worksheet, right? And so I think having village staff work with Deb or at least South Central or, and/or Dane County Library System to kind of take another, re, another look at that worksheet will then, I kept calling it dominoes, right? So like if you, if you can shave some square footage down, what does that do to the long range impact? Because these numbers tend to grow exponentially over 20 years. So, you know, any square foot you can save would be help, um, make the project less expensive.
Sure. And, but we do need to meet the needs of our community too. And a lot of what the outreach was or what we learned from the surveys was that people want meeting spaces, which is square footage. I mean, and having a library without spaces for people to meet isn't going to meet the needs of the community either. So I think that needs to be kept in mind with any additional numbers. But I am, like, I'm glad staff is meeting, but I'm like, does that include the library board president? When that's happening, because I think it's important that the library board be keep kept informed of those, of what's happening too. Because that's what they're, you're all for, to work on that. So I don't, is that like during library board meetings then that that's occurring or just with one or two people and staff or?
To be fair, that, we just came up with this idea today. Again, correct. That is not, that, the library board recommended that, um, the location be, um, approved and fund, and then fund next year's work, uh, for the budget. So this, this, this is my recommendation.
But nothing we need to talk about tonight because it's not on our agenda then?
The site is, right?
Right, the site is.
So this is, this has to do with the site.
Wow. May I ask you a question? Because I can see all the stuff in the library door, but I know that site has, the site that you guys are considering is right next to the Haymarket Development and some of that Shady Grove. All of that has a large drainage unit that runs through it. So that drainage unit goes up. It's not an easement yet, but it's a drainage way, right? Goes up through that library site. Sort of, maybe not quite in the middle, but it cuts it sort of. Have you guys looked at that as part of all that, all layout with your 25 square foot building and, you know, parking and everything else? And some of that could be regraded and maybe rerouted. But just, I was just curious, when you consider that site, there is any drainage area that runs right through the.
No, that's, that's part of the architectural and engineering. That's part of the overall project. No, that work is, so no, the, the answer is no, the work has not been done.
I was just curious.
Cindy, do you know, did the previous, uh, architect go through all that? You're shaking your head. Yeah. So. Yeah. Sorry. The people on the, yeah, the people on Zoom can't hear you. So, thank you.
Yeah, I have that paperwork if you want to look at it. Um, I think it's like the, the waterway, I think it's slightly, you're looking north, it's slightly left to the land, uh, which, and yeah, it does kind of like run in the middle. Um, we are working with a civil engineering group, um, during, Ms. Hall.
Yeah. Cindy, you can't see it, but yeah, he's showing the.
I pulled it up just, uh, just to get a visual. If I'm looking at it correct, right? Here's, here's PB, the bus, uh, assembly units, stable, so bear with me, but, um, so it's kind of like right through here, right? Site is all of this.
Yep.
And the drainage way sort of comes right through, you know, this upper half, I would call it. And it, I was just, I was just wondering when you consider the site, like you'd have to either reroute this and grade or, or try to avoid it to some degree. It, it, you still have a big area on the site. So it's just something to think about. We cite something there.
Just one, one comment. A little interference there. Um, slight modification. It's really just semantics, but it's important to staff. So just a little bit of clarification, David, on, uh, our staff doesn't make any recommendations to the library board. We were just bringing some things for them to consider and talk about. So we weren't recommending to them that they, we were just bringing up the idea that you could, you know, these are some rather large tax impact figures you may want to consider an advisory referendum. Just something to think about, um, regarding the site. The library board hasn't, we're just asking them if they wanted to designate, officially designate the site. It's a new library board. That hasn't happened. This board hasn't done that. And is that indeed where they want the library to be? So I was just asking them that question. Do they want to look at other options or not? Simple as that.
So if we pass this tonight with that, excuse me, would then whoever's doing cost estimates, would they just only look at that site then? Or does it, does it have any weight to it or no?
I think it's just a, it, it, it's about understanding where you are. Providing guidance in terms of the process, but that doesn't mean that, you know, if, if the process that everyone's going through, you know, there's, one of the ideas that was discussed is, well, maybe it's even bigger because it includes some office space for staff or something like, or for village staff. Maybe there's, becomes a need to incorporate some of the other villages' needs in with that. Those things have been thrown around and if that ends up where you land, well, then you pick a different site if you can't get around that drainage space because you're even doing something. It's, it's just guidance for now.
Okay.
On the location. I'm not sure what the motion includes with respect to the budget. Assuming that's going to go up to the budget in practice later this year.
Um, is there any like legal or tax implications with the village not owning the land? Cause it's owned by the Friends group, correct?
I don't think there's any, there's any legal consequence. Whether or not it's taxable property under realist, real property taxes depends on a full set of tests. And my guess is that it's not, or it wouldn't be held by that group or it'd be being, it'd be taxed now. What, who will hold it once the library's built? That, I don't know that that, I don't know if that decision's been made, but there, there are a number of different options that can be considered as you move forward.
I, I think Tracy's on the call and maybe she can speak to the Friends intentions with the lands. I was under the impression that the Friends would be donating the land back to the library board. And I, she's also out of the country and tuning in. So I think.
Oh, there she is. I can see her.
Hi. Sorry about that. Um, yes, Cindy, that's correct. That is our intention. I'm going to stay muted. I'm going to focus on the three children.
Good luck with that.
For the conversation.
I just wanted to add on that I think that this site does have some significant benefits. It's proximity to, uh, our newer development and as the village goes in that direction and to the schools in the village and, uh, it's already owned by the Friends of the Library. I think that's our, definitely some significant benefits. There's also some challenges, which is the drainage, um, and other infrastructure improvements, but we need to be made. So just get driveway in, water in, uh, and all of those costs. So understanding what those are, I think would be important in the, in the process. And, uh, I think it's clear what the, the library board recommends. And I think it's clear what the library board recommends of that site would best fit the needs for what they recommend a la grab in our community. But our job on the village board is to take into consideration the needs from all of the departments, and how we put together our cohesive plan on how we're going to do that moving forward. And looking at a long-term vision, and something that, you know, our community can support and pay for, and ask them, you know, reasonably, what tax implications you can support. Because I do have concerns about the figures, that, you know, some people may get priced out of their homes. And, you know, increasing some of those taxes, $100 a month, you know, could force them to not be able to live there, because of the community. And while some people are willing to pay that price because of the benefits of library buildings, I think we should do our due diligence, and I think the site is ideal, but I don't want to close off other potential that would fit the needs for the village.
Yeah, I don't think the site's the problem, it's the cost. You have a 25,000 square foot building, 17 to 21 million, I would say that's under, because we're using only 4.5% increase in construction cost per year. This year was 20%. I don't know what it's going to be next year, but it's probably not going to be 4.5%. That comes out to be about 1.6 million per year for the building for the next 20 years. Add on that to operations, 1.6 million for operations. That's an average cost of other libraries, so it could be more, it could be a little less. That comes out to be between $350 to $400 per 100,000 for someone who owns a business or a home in this village. We need to look at the timeline, and we need to look at the costs to operate it. Because nobody can pay that, or anyone I know. That's my comment on this.
And, but voting tonight around being able to designate the site for the proposed future village library doesn't sign us into any future action. We could change it if we need to, if we learn more information. I'm, with the information we have right now presented to us, that might be the site that makes the most sense. So tonight, we could vote that that be designated it. And then as we continue with the discussions on budget operations, other municipal needs, we could pivot as needed. Am I understanding that right?
I guess.
I think the library board would be willing to do that too. If the River Nile is running through that land, we're going to have to obviously pivot and make different decisions.
Yeah.
I think my, my point earlier was more around, and Sarah, I think you're right, right? Like, we can always, we can make it the, you know, the proposed site, right? But I think that where I was looking at it was, and I guess this is more of a, kind of a logistics question, right? So this may be a Larry and John question. I mean, I wanted to have JJ do some work with Deb. And I realize it's, I'm being Pollyannaish about this, but I would love to have an architect involved this year. Again, more of a phase zero kind of thing. But it sounds like, according to Melissa, we can't make that motion tonight.
Well, I'd love for the library board to be involved in that decision.
Just three people at a time, one at a time.
Well, I was just saying, it's not me that's saying that we can't do it. Our attorneys always say we can't do what's on our, what's not on our agenda, so.
You just brought it up. I guess I'm just trying to, from where I sit, right? Like, I just think that, for me personally, right, like, I think that, I think we all agree that that's an ideal site, right? But to state that's the future site, I would like more information. And I think understanding what the square footage looks like, and working with an architect to look at our current facility studies plan, our facility studies plan, and taking the library into account would help me make that decision. But it sounds like I can't make that motion tonight.
So by voting tonight just on where to have the library, if the current site is voted on, I think that helps give staff an idea moving forward. Doesn't necessarily restrict you to 25,000 square feet or not. It doesn't lock us into this being the absolute space going forward. But I do think it's important, because this board has decided this is our number one priority. We have formed a library board, the community has said this is something that they want. We need to work to find a solution to move this project forward. If it's not in the timeline that the library set forth, which they were being fiscally responsible in setting that, because knowing the cost increases every year to build it, it's the board's, the board's decision on how that fits in with everything else that is going on here, and how that fits in with our residents. And so we need to somehow figure out where it will make sense in our timeline. And I hope that we can raise the funds or get creative on how a library can fit in our community, because this is something that is important to a lot of residents. And I think for our future as well, which will bring in people that want to be able to stay in our community, and businesses who want people to stay in our community and go to the library, and then go out to eat and get gas, and go to the gas, go to the grocery store. Whereas currently, they go to a different library, they spend the whole day outside of our community, and then come home and go to bed. So when we're looking at the future of Cottage Grove, a library, we've been told by our residents that they want a library here. And so I hope that we can work to figure out how we're going to make that a reality, where we aren't breaking the bank, where we aren't increasing costs, taxes astronomically. Like, nobody wants that. But I think we can work to figure it out. And as far as, going back to the topic of the land, this is where it's been proposed for more than a decade or two, maybe. And being next to two schools is super beneficial. It's easy access by bike, there'll be communities right by it, neighborhoods right by it. And I think that the current site is best for it. And I am glad that the former library board had the foresight to get that land, despite how divisive it was to try to find the specific spot, however many years ago. So I think that having the library there would be the best place at this point, unless the River Nile runs through it, and then somewhere else would be better. But until that time, we figure that out, I would make a motion to approve the land that's currently owned by the Friends of the Cottage Grove Library, next to Glacial Drumland School and Granite Bridge School as the site of the proposed future village library.
All right, thanks, Musa, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sarah. Motion second, any further discussion?
I guess I would just be a little more comfortable with the motion if it said, motion to designate the current land owned by the Friends of the Cottage Grove Library as the preferred site of the proposed future library. That language would just make me feel a little bit better.
Agreed.
Is there any library-specific language and library board stuff that has us using the word designated here versus preferred? Does it change how you can move forward anyway?
No.
Okay.
There are a lot of designateds in the agenda.
Yeah, just having it say designate and designate it twice in one sentence just seems a little redundant. So I think I would just clean it up and make it a little clearer.
Are you okay with that motion there?
Okay, wordsmith, yes. Preferred, over designated. Are you sure you don't want to comment there too, somewhere?
No, no.
Sarah, you okay with a second then?
Oh, yes, yes.
Changing. At least you've gotten that referred, okay.
Can I just add on? Do you think that we have enough direction with this conversation and the motion that we should kind of combine these? Or maybe this needs to be a future agenda item, so I guess, that we need to combine forces on our facilities and library and figure out a cookie, so, like, we got to bring all this together, I think.
I mean, I've heard...
You're fine talking about this, the library board agenda was also on our agenda for tonight, and it's the new businesses, you can basically talk about anything library.
Thank you, I absolutely agree. That's something we need to talk about. And I think that, again, that's part of the architectural, having an architectural firm involved.
From a, from a library board perspective, I think the library board would like to weigh in on who the architect is, because there are library-specific architects.
Agreed.
And that the firm that is chosen needs to understand everything about libraries.
But this motion doesn't preclude us from having those conversations, doing that work together.
Correct.
And I think future facilities need to include some other items on our agenda rather than just...
Any further discussion from that?
My only other question, JJ, I mean, in terms of, what do you need from us to help guide you? It sounds like it'll have to be in two weeks, but I just want to, I want to hit it now, right? Like, what you, in order to, because again, I think, I agree, Cindy and I have talked, right? Like, we want to get this into the budget, we want to get ultimately, for next year's budget, right? That the budget needs taken care of. And we also want to inject the long-range plan into the financial management plan, which we're all going to work together to try, between the library and the village board. But again, from my ask, right, to start to work on the Space Needs worksheet, what do you need from this board to give you direction to do that? Assuming, making a lot of assumptions here.
I think I've got it, and Matt or Larry can correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, my position is, it's time designated to work with the library, the library board. We can reach out to Deb, see what we can do, and just information gathering as we head into budget talks. And loop Cindy in and David in as board member there. But I mean, just no different than any other time. I'm kind of hearing some general direction to gather more information for board consideration.
Yeah, that doesn't have to be something that you vote to send them off to do.
I just, I want to be super clear to staff, right? Like, we want to sharpen the pencil and the numbers. Do you need a motion from us to do that, or do you feel like you have enough feeling sense from this way? No, I can see what we can do to sharpen the pencil.
Yeah, sharpen the pencil, and then we've also heard, you know, we need to talk about this within the context. And I think Melissa just maybe made that comment too. Need to talk about it in the context of overall cap proposals, and that's the part of the more information.
Before you turn that off, Larry, I had a question as far as, what's the difference between the village board and the library board and the directives that move forward from? Like, the library board controls the library, and it's a separate entity from the village board. So which one has oversight in this instance?
Great question. In a real general sense, the way I, the way I talk about it is that the village board has the purse strings. And for the most part, the rest is up to the library board. And obviously, those things are related, right? Because the village board wants to hear more about plans and how those can be adjusted from a purse strings perspective. But the village board isn't really going to be making the decision about what kind of program is going to occur, and even some of the personnel decisions and things like that. It's all about holding conditions on those purse strings. So, you know, it's not just a lump sum, do what you want with it. It's, well, we'll fund this, but it can only be used for a library director or something like that. So they, the easy answer is money, everything else. But because the money controls everything else, there's some crossover there.
Okay, so with that though, I feel like the library board should be included with JJ's talking with Deb at SCLS about what the study use or whatever that...
Space Needs worksheet.
Space Needs worksheet should be. Because we did go over that with the library planning committee and the library board when I was on it.
Right, you've all seen the Space Needs worksheet.
Right. So if any tweaks are going to be made to it, I think the library board should be included in that, because they have gotten the feedback from our residents on what's wanted and needed.
Well, we've been doing research all summer. We, the six of us have visited every single library in Dane County, and some outside of Dane County.
Right.
Have a relationship with all of the library directors, we have a pretty good idea of what goes into libraries and how they work, which I think then gives us ideas of how we can start to sharpen the pencil, or whatever you guys have been saying, like, tighten the purse strings.
And it also...
Reduce cost.
It also needs to meet with Dane County library standards as well. I mean, you can go bare minimum on everything, but that won't meet the needs of our community either.
Right, and I think we talked today about, it's a tiered system as well, when you're talking about the Dane County standards. So you have three tiers, and you can fall within those tiers for different levels of service.
So.
I mean, and there, I, I'm confident that there are ways to reduce costs. I think we have, we have to do our best job doing that, and especially after our conversation this morning. I think I realized that, and we conveying that to the, to the library board in our next meeting. And we're tasked with a very difficult goal of building a library, and that is our sole focus. And so the timeline, I think, reflects accomplishing that job, which is what we put forward. This is how we want to, the next year is going to give us more information. We really need the budget to hire a library director and an architect in order to make a formal program statement, and to figure out exactly what this is going to look like. Because then we can start making cut places, and we can come up with different operating scenarios, and, you know, all those types of things. But we need another year of research to do those things.
Sure.
So I've been able to watch this from the cheap seats, you know, not really engaged. And you always ask me to, when you're about to go off a cliff, to tell you. And here's what I see. I think that we're getting to a point where there's going to be real resources that have to be put in, additional resources, but they're going to start ramping up to, as Cindy said, take really the next step. And there's, I'm hearing hesitancy from various people on the board about whether you're, you're interested in spending a million-plus dollars to learn more information with the hesitancy you have about the overall total and how it's going to fit into the, the, the village's overall capital expenditure plans. Everybody in this board, and I'm sure in the library board, are really nice people, and this is the top priority. And as Melissa said, you know, we got to, until you figure out there's no way to do it, you got to keep trying to find a way. But it seems to me that we're at this point, right? And I don't know if you all feel that, but we're at this point where it's, okay, are we going to spend the money on an architect to figure out what you would build and therefore how much it would cost? Because it's, that's kind of part of the, the design is part of determining those costs. And what would those operations include? And I, I think you just really have to have a really honest conversation about maybe providing direction between, we have a joint meeting of the library board and the village board. Roll up your sleeves, talk about it. Because I feel like we're, what the cliff I see right now is we're going to get to budget time, and this board's going to maybe vote no on spending a million dollars on library-related things when there's board members who have real concerns about whether we'll be able to pull off that. And that's going to be a really bad time for that to happen. Because there's going to be no coming back from that for at least another year in terms of setting the budget. Really hard to do, but I think it's, I'm seeing it being very necessary to ask the initial question and talk about how we get there. Because if the answer to the library board is, if it's going to be $20 million over 20 years, or 40, or 10, or 5, that's too much, they need to know that before we design it. Or if it's, other things can be prioritized longer term, so we can get that number one priority done in the shorter timeframe. priority done in the shorter timeframe. Those kinds of decisions are really kind of need to be made. Whether, and, and there's going to be, I know, been through this kind of thing before, there's going to be people who want to talk about how you reach out to your community and, you know, take the, we want this as a priority, but now we're kind of thinking about how much it costs, do we still want it? How do we ask those questions? How do we get that feedback? Is it a referendum? Is it, is it a survey, another survey, a mailer? But I, I feel like you're, you're, you're about to get into a position where you're going to be at cross odds, if you're not already, and it should all be done to the best you can before you get to budget.
Right, and I think from a Library Board perspective, we've discussed, you know, the next year, what we need to do, and then we need, we need something to show the voters and what they'd be voting on if there was a tax increase. And so we, I mean, we've, you've seen the timeline, I don't have to tell you what we wrote, but that a referendum would be in the future.
I guess I'd rather hear from the taxpayers before we spend a million dollars on something that may or may not happen. Because once this kicks to the levy limits, it goes to the taxpayers for that vote. This happened 15 years ago. You gotta ask these questions, to Larry's point, hard questions right now. And again, it's a $20 million biz, buil, building-ish, maybe it's a little less, I don't know. And you gotta fund that over that 20 years, and it's a 1.6 million-ish per year to operate it. That's a big number for any resident, any business. It's a 30% increase in your taxes. You're adding 13 people, you have 37 on staff, that's a third. It's an easy, it's kind of an easy math thing to do.
Right, this is a new building, it's a new service, it's new departments.
Correct.
There's going to be costs associated with that. And I think, you know, our job is to figure out what this building is going to look like and how we're going to staff it appropriately, and what's going to be in it, and then we need, we need to be able to show that to the community, so they can make a decision. Is, is that worth it or not?
But do you need to spend a million dollars before you find that out? That's my question.
I think-
Yeah, I don't think it's fair to be directing that at Cindy.
I'm directing it at all the board right now.
That's fine, you can direct it at, that is not a fight.
It's not, it's not something against Cindy or any, any of the-
No, it just, I'm sorry, that's my fault, I apologize. It just seemed like you were directing it towards Cindy, and I know how much time and effort she has put into this.
I would commend her, 100% of that.
I, I think, just to kind of assuage any concerns, right? So, we took a first pass at the numbers, we're gonna, staff's going to work to try to sharpen the pencils, phone purse strings, I think we're going to take another pass at it.
How many are going to be taking passes at it for quite some time?
Yeah, this is going to be a super iterative process. I agree with Larry, at some point, there needs to be a joint board meeting. Stefan said earlier today, we need to have better communication. I think that's a perfect example. Maybe we get on a regular cadence for all of us to get together, and I think we just keep iterating through this process. Because we've put a lot of work in, Cindy herself has put in, this is her new full-time job apparently lately. I think that, that, you know, I think we all need to, you know, to Larry's point, there needs to be more work, more collaboration, and I think we're, I think everybody's on the same page, it's just, we all have slightly different ideas how to get there, and I think that's, I think that's what you're feeling right now, Larry, is, we all, we all want the library, it's clearly a priority for all of us, but we're just all, you know, kind of leery on how do we get there? And then we have, oh yeah, 15 years ago to haunt us, right? And so, I can speak for myself, being on the Library Planning Committee, like, that was a constant conversation. The Library Board has come up several times since I rejoined the board, so I mean, it's, I think it's just sins of the past, everybody's just a little anxious, or at least I'm sensing anxiety, right? And so I think we just need to, some, some folks are not anxious, I know I am, I'm always anxious, but I think, I think we're getting there, and I think we're just going to work through the, the numbers, and I think everybody's on the same page.
Ultimately, you didn't know what taxpayers will pay. Then you can size the building to every, that is, it's a, it's kind of simple.
I mean, we'll get there. I think it's just, I think, my two cents is that those initial numbers were a little shocking, and then we all kind of, there was a freak-out moment, and we've had our freak-out moment, now it's just time to go back to work, and I think we'll, we'll be okay, and we all have different ideas. And we met today, and I think it was a great meeting, and I think we'll keep having more meetings, and I think we'll get there. But it's, I think everybody has good points, and I think we're all going to end up doing-
Right, this is not easy, and I think our budget requests for next year represent the work that we need to accomplish, which is also something that you could look at.
I was wondering if we might be able to engage with the Ellers, and this might be a future, kind of to look at different, various timelines, various scopes, like kind of a comparison, so when we do get to the point of however we ask taxpayers, you know, these are various options. We have this phased approach, we have this, like, you know, how much are, kind of work backwards a little bit, and like, how much are we willing to pay, and then what's the best possible thing we can get for that, and working under a certain time, I don't, like, how do we get around to what it is the community will support in general?
One thought is to have an additional, so nor, normally, we, the Budget Review Committee, the old Finance Committee, reviews the financial management plan, makes recommendations for that update to the board. The board reviews it over the course of one meeting, I mean, because you're trying to get it done ahead of, because that kind of provides direction leading into, even though it's a five-year plan, that most immediate year gives direction to everyone for the budget process. So there's some time constraints there on a need to kind of review it once, approve it that night. The board could consider, probably with a little bit more cost from Ellers, but to do two meetings of that at the board level this year, one meeting, figure out a special, special night to do a workshop with Ellers on that. That, that'd be helpful, because it's kind of hard to do these kind of things on a, because otherwise, it's going to be part of a regular agenda. You almost, it's almost substantial enough to want to pull it out and have a separate meeting.
And that could, then Library Board could be part of that meeting as well. I think that would be the idea.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, something, you know, that we haven't talked about is the numbers that you have seen are, you know, the taxpayers putting the entire bill. And I don't think there's a library that exists in Wisconsin where the taxpayer foots the entire bill. And so we need to understand that a little bit better.
No, we did not? Are we concluded with the discussion?
I'm more than happy to sit down with anyone. I mean, this has become my new favorite topic, aside from neurogenetics, and I'm more than happy to sit down with anyone and talk about it.
All right, thank you, Cindy, appreciate it. We have motion and a second. On the location, preferred location. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Aye. Any abstain? Motion carries. Next up, we have Peer Court Steering Committee.
Here we go. We met on Thursday, July 21st. Let's just see here. Updates from prior, Briar Patch, no new youths from Cottage Grove, all cases have been closed successfully. Briar Patch met with the Judge Mitchell, who is the juvenile administrator, or juvenile judge. A few days prior to that meeting, they discussed that, that Cottage Grove has an interest in having a meeting slash town hall around auto thefts. Judge Mitchell already hosts a panel around this topic, and they're willing to partner with Cottage Grove on this. I did have an email today, back and forth with a gentleman named John. I'm sorry, I don't have his last name off the top of my head, but John and I are going to work with staff, probably Lisa, right, to schedule some time in the town hall to, or in the Village Hall, sorry, to have a town hall meeting around the auto thefts. I have checked with Lieutenant Wagner, auto thefts are down, however, every now and again it is a topic that comes up in conversation, so ultimately, the topic of this town hall would be, what are the causes of this? The really interesting tidbit is that it's really just a core group of juvenile youths, it's like, maybe two dozen at most. And then they get friends, and they get two friends, and they get two friends, and unfortunately, some, some youths make some poor choices, and, and so that's, I think ultimately, that's going to be really the topic of conversation is around, there's just a really a core group of people, and what, what can we do, and who can we talk to, you know, in terms of your elected officials, to take, to dedicate more funding, to help these folks. And so I will be working to schedule that. I do not have a date, as I just got that email today. So, with that, that was it. The meeting lasted all about 11 minutes. It was a quick one.
Any questions for David? All right, thanks, David. Next up, we have Deer Grove EMS Commission, Sarah Brittany.
All right. So we did have a pinning and promotion ceremony. Jeremy McMullin was promoted to captain, and Devin Anders to lieutenant. That was fun to watch the pinning ceremony. From the chief's report, the call numbers continued to increase. We had the most calls for any month of June since 2017. The ambulance was staffed in both stations 50% of the time, so 50% of the time, there's an ambulance in both stations, otherwise there was an ambulance just in one or the other. And we then talked about the intergovernmental agreement. Oh, before we got there, the, the new ambulance is scheduled for mid-August delivery, expected to go on service in September this year. All right, so then we got to the intergovernmental agreement, a lot of discussion. There were two motions that came out of that. The first motion was to not change the intergovernmental agreement at all from its current state. That passed four to two. There was then further discussion, and then another motion to continue discussions and negotiations around the intergovernmental contract agreement, and that failed two to four. And then that was, that was about the end of the meeting.
Any questions, Sarah or Brittany?
Brittany, was that your second meeting?
That was my third.
Third.
Third, mhm, yeah.
Thank you for your service. Any further questions there? More work to be done on intergovernor agreement certainly, and certainly appreciate the efforts that's going on thus far. Ladbig, ladbig. Ladbig, landfill monitoring.
This one was a scorcher. We met on Monday, July 25th. Meeting started at 6:15. We approved the minutes, we approved the bills, there were no testing or monitoring results available, will be available yet the next meeting. At the next meeting, Tina? The lady from Strand is going to come and talk about the mo, testing and monitoring results, and we closed the meeting five minutes later. Real scorcher.
Efficient.
Very efficient.
Very efficient, very good. Next up, Joint Fire Department Committee. David, Melissa, Chris.
Anybody else want to take this one? I'm kidding. Sarah and Chris, keep me honest here. So, we met, we discussed the final sale of Engine 3, it did sell, I believe $50 less than the reserve, but we still sold it, going to a good cause. We discussed revisions to the capital budget. Most notably, it was a little bit, we kind of talked about it in the revisions to the capital budget, and actually, actually talked it later, so I'll just kind of cover it now. And we talked about purchasing a ladder earlier than designated, just because the prices are going up. I believe at one time, in the financial management plan, it was $800,000, and now the chief is budgeting for $3 million.
What?
Yes.
That's a high, that's a high, yeah.
It was a very, it was a high estimate.
We have a, we have an estimate for a ladder if we were to buy it now, and it's not $3 million.
Matt's face is everything.
Last time it was 1.1 or so, I think it went up to, from the prior. That was two, three months ago, right? Am I remembering that correctly? I'm sorry.
You're, you're right, it's at, I don't know, David, sorry, you keep going.
All right, sorry.
That will be a future agenda item for us to discuss. Again, we're well within the timeframe of the next fire meeting, so I was gonna, I had, just haven't had a chance, with everything else going, I haven't had a chance to sit down with Matt, so. I, and I believe the chief said he was also going to bring it up to you, but we did make a promise that we would talk about it at a Village Board meeting and report back at the next fire meeting, so we shall do that.
Report back is shock.
Right. Yeah, I will prep something, and we'll cover that at the, probably at the next meeting, so just remind me, Lisa. And then we talked about the new agreement. I did work with Rick to come up with a list of items to discuss at Joint Fire. I did not want to bring all of them up, so I put just three of them at a time. We talked financial management responsibilities and audit, title and ownership of equipment, and withholding of payments, meaning municipalities cannot withhold payments. I think we had a good, healthy discussion on those. Those were all tabled by, motions were made by the town to table those in favor of, once we get the entire agreement in full, then we'll vote it up or down. Chief gave a report. Chris took the notes, so I didn't, I didn't grab the whole chief's report, but I think we're sitting around 40, 40 members.
Forty, mhm.
And kind of gave some overarching idea, news about where we're at and where we're going. And then we set a next meeting date, and we adjourned.
I just have one other comment about the capital. If, it's a few years out, and I know that Madison has an electric fire truck, but if you can consider at least an option?
I thought of you actually in the meeting, I did bring it up. There are electric engines, there, there's no such thing as an electric ladder.
Yet.
Yet.
Yeah.
Well, I did, I think, I believe I did ask, like, what's the timeframe? Like, when do you think there would be, and, and, all the assistant chiefs and the chiefs were like, we're years and years and years away, just because of the way the ladders work. You don't have enough horsepower to get it up. So, and then on top of it, we did talk about, and again, we'll talk about the, the ladder replacement at another day, but just as a, as a note of fact, there are new emissions guidelines that are coming, and so that was another impetus to try to purchase the truck earlier, because some of, a lot of the emissions rules that are coming out, you need to multiple diesel engines on the truck to satisfy the emission requirement, so that's driving the price up even farther. So that was another reason why, again, from a budgeting standpoint, why it was so high. But we'll, I wanted to work with the, the chief to kind of, if we're going to ask for that kind of dollar or not, like, I want to work with the chief to kind of put a presentation together, and, you know, I, I didn't feel, coming out of that meeting, like it was appropriate to just come here and say, hey, we want to buy a new truck, should we do it early? Like, I want to really frostedize, so, and I thought it was appropriate, so. Sarah, Chris, did I miss anything?
I would just add, at the end of the meeting, or at the end of the chief's report, the, he went through the call volumes, and they're up significantly for the village, 23% of all Village of Cottage Grove calls for the fire department-
Oh, yes, thank you.
-are from Cottage Grove Commons. 23% of all Village of Cottage Grove calls. Of those, of all those calls, so it's, so we had, not very, don't have my calculator out, but we had 74 total calls, so 23% of those are Cottage Grove Commons. Out of those, three of them would be considered legitimate. The rest were false alarms, and their systems were false alarming. And so it kind of ties into Law Enforcement Committee later, because we, they did end up having the police give a citation, because we have the ordinance around how many false alarms. And with the issue, many issues, many issues with that. A big one, safety-wise, is the residents, by the time the fifth false alarm goes off, they don't even evacuate anymore, they try to sneak back in, they disarming their smoke detectors, so concern for safety for if there were to be a real, a real call. So, they've met with the developers, and, like I said, gave the citation, and we'll see if that improves, but that was the only thing to add.
Yep, thank you.
So with that, then, is it a matter of residents not knowing, like, how to operate their systems?
No, it's automatically going on.
No, it's, it-
Sensors are sensing things that aren't there.
Yeah, Steve Anders actually asked the chief who the alarm company was, because I believe it was you that asked about Hydrate, and he-
Yes, because-
And then, and then Anders asked about what company is the alarm company, and he mentioned it, and Anders was like, oh, no wonder. So, not, according to Mr. Anders from the town, that that alarm company is not all that reputable. reputable. And so there was some conversation about tweaking the alarms and tweaking the sensitivity, and the chief really took the developer to task about how it's like, this is a real safety issue, and we really, really need you to get this under control. And I think it had been about, not quite a week?
Yeah, had, yeah, they met with them.
And they hadn't had any calls since then?
Yeah, they met with the developers during the week, then that weekend, there were three false alarms in just that weekend, and then the police gave the citation, and that, the citation was given literally just a few days before our meeting.
And then miraculously, all the false alarms stopped after the.
We haven't heard enough yet.
We haven't heard since, but the chief remarked that no more false alarms after the citation was issued. But we'll hear back at the, at the next meeting.
So are the alarms inspected? Like, was that, were they part of, are they required to be inspected through the fire inspections, or is that, like, totally something else?
I can't speak to that. I don't think chief is on.
Do you make sure that they are?
Fire alarms and fire, fire suppression and fire alarms are part of fire inspections. However, there's been, fairly recently, and our building inspectors are looking into this, a change in policy of the state that apparently that's now the responsibility of the building inspection, and not part of regular fire inspections. And sometimes that's, different departments want to handle that different, some fire departments may still want to handle all of them, but that might be more municipal-based departments, and not when it's a private fire department like we have. So general engineering, our building inspection company is, they have to make sure they have the right licenses. Right now, they don't have, and they have 100 communities, so we're not alone here with this change. They're looking into how best to handle that, and they met with, Attorney Manthee and I met with inspectors and the fire department to walk through that. So I think we have a path forward, and it sounds like the fire department prefers the inspectors to handle it. So, but that's separate from the standard fire inspections. Alarms and fire suppression are now separated from that.
Anything else on Joint Fire? Interesting. Next up, law enforcement committee, Sarah.
Yeah, so it was a quick meeting. Calls for service are, they're busy, nothing sticking out as any sort of major crime wave or any major concerns. New offices are doing well. They should be, everybody should be off of probation and up to full staffing soon. We did, exciting news, we did name our new canine handler, and we got a new canine. Well, we picked the new dog out. So Officer O'Brien will be the next canine handler, hoping to have the dog by the end of the year. I must, we must not have a name, because I kept calling it the dog in my notes, so maybe, maybe there's a naming, something with the canine group that's been helping to fund it, but it's a one-year-old male German shepherd. So that'll be fun to have the canine back in service. And then the National Night Out is tomorrow, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at GDS. So they did mention that they wrote the citation. They did talk a little bit about the pursuit through the village on Friday, the 22nd. I'm not sure if you guys had gotten any questions on that, but it started in McFarland. The Cottage Grove Police disabled the vehicle by the fire department, and then the folks got out of the car and ran on foot, and they were not apprehended. So we don't, there was no crime known. So there's nothing really to, no known crime other than fleeing, so. And that was, that was it.
Was it a different officer that gets to be the canine handler?
Yeah, because the lawyer's retired with the current officer, yeah.
Yep.
That wouldn't work. How was your work today? Anyway, sorry. Parks and Recs. Heidi.
Yep, thanks. So we met last week on Thursday, and we had a presentation that I had organized about a solar EV charging station proposal at Baccan Park, and the committee decided not to move forward with that at this time. It was a solar, freestanding solar system that had rechargeable batteries, so you could charge an electric vehicle at night. But the cost is just kind of out of, out of reach currently for battery capacity, and we want to consider some other things in the future as we build out community parks, new shelter, may consider solar there to help offset energy use there. So kind of got some ideas for the future, but didn't want to move forward with that proposal for next year. And then we talked about pollinator gardens in village parks. And if you remember, in May, we passed Nomo May and a resolution to support pollinators. So Sean's going to work with Josh and park staff to identify some areas that we'd like to put some pollinator gardens in. I think we're going to start with four, is that kind of what we're thinking? Four areas to add some pollinator spaces to support pollinators. Then we met with Aaron and talked about the future parks and open space plan, and kind of went over the introductory portion, and he was able to bring in a lot of background information on Cottage Grove that was also part of the housing study, so kind of the population that we're serving in our parks. So I think that was valuable to bring into that discussion as well. And then went over Sean's report, and the community guide comes out on Thursday, and we're excited about that. And also taking part in National Night Out tomorrow. Do you have anything you want to add, Sean? Anything?
So we've checked David's information like three times, so we should be good.
Are we sure though? Are we sure?
There might be a fake tank or something.
It's been Jeff Lindberg for the last, I mean, we might as well keep it throughout the term, and we'll keep the email address the same.
Oh, you might see some things going on around with silt fences and such for construction beginning on our park improvements, so hopefully we'll see some dirt moving on those soon. You have any questions?
Thanks, Heidi. Next, we have reports from village officers, starting off with Larry. Anything? Talked enough tonight? Got a laugh a little bit around here. All right. Next, then, we have, more serious note, election update. Lisa. And Lisa concluded a memo in the packet as well.
Yes, so there's a memo in the packet. In-person absentee voting started last Tuesday, and will continue. The last day will be August 6th, which is a Saturday. I will be here from 10:00 a.m. till noon. And then we do have extended hours on this coming Friday. Again, there is no drop boxes. We've sealed it off permanently, and we do get a few questions, but people have been gracious enough to just come in and drop them off. So I think we're getting messaging out that that is the case. Gabe's put some posts out there for us, so I think people are understanding that change. As far as Election Day, what it'll look like? It'll look like it has, in the last elections, we'll be utilizing the doors to the west of the building in a one-way fashion, same way. We do have a few new people that will be working at the polls this time. I do have a new chief election inspector, which I'm really excited about. She's been training and working hard, so she's going to take the charge this time, and we'll move forward. So if you see Maggie, make sure you tell her hi and thank her for her service, because it's great to have some new people stepping up in those roles. So we're anticipating having a great day, and it'll be business as usual. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Lisa, I had one question. It was a random one from my wife. When you mail me the ballot, right, if I do an absentee, if I hand deliver it to you, I noticed on the return end that it's already stamped. If I hand deliver it to you, does the village still have to pay for the stamp?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And there's no way around it. That's in law. We have to provide that postage on there, so. And I will say that we get a lot returned by hand. People are not putting them in the mail as much as they did in previous years.
Sure. Okay.
Just ensure that their ballot is here, so.
So Lisa, is the box out here that Bill pays, that would be considered a drop box, and we can't drop it off in there?
Correct. So that is a drop box. Obviously, we utilize it for other purposes, but during the election period, it will be sealed off.
Oh, okay.
And it will be for each election going forward. So if people have utility bills, we've been trying to educate them for a while that the utility clerk is now located at Progress Drive. However, we still have people that like to come in and say hi, and we graciously take those payments. They do sometimes get upset if they can't put it in the drop box, and that's why we had to seal it off a little bit more securely. And we've, we try to educate, and, you know, people are creature of habits, so they can certainly drop them off when we're here during office hours.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to thank you for putting this together, Lisa. It's very helpful, and I appreciate your, your service on Election Day and all of the volunteers as well that helped make that successful for our residents.
All right, any questions for Lisa? We'll move then on to communications business, and first up is consideration for approval of the vouchers. Any questions, comments regarding the vouchers as presented?
I'll make the motion to approve the vouchers as presented.
All right, thanks, Sarah. Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? Having heard and done, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Correspondents, I think there were a number of emails that came to the entire board regarding the location of the library. Those are the only ones I can think of right now that come to mind. I don't know if anybody has anything else. Then we'll move right on to upcoming community events. We've already heard, Heidi plug the, or not, somebody plugged the National Night Out, sorry. Sarah. And I know there's other things. We have the garage sale coming up this weekend, the community-wide garage sale, so some good finds for those people looking out for good finds and finding new homes for things. We also have, then, the following weekend, we have Stuff the Bus, both in Monona and Cottage Grove. That's Lions, statewide Lions effort to provide supplies and monies to local schools for those that needs those supplies. So it's a great opportunity there. Those are at the Piggly Wiggly, as well as the Metro Market in Monona. I know there's other things right now, but I'm spacing it, so.
Not necessarily community event, but an event, I mean, it's open to the public, it's public media. The Capital Area Major Planning Commission, we hear our urban service area amendment change on the 11th, public hearing, and if anyone would like to attend, I'd be happy to forward the information to them.
I'll come to one if you come to a fire meeting.
Do you want to think about that?
Yeah, you better think about that. And I totally forgot, Brittany's got a grand opening this week too, so yes.
I do have a grand opening on Friday. 3:30's ribbon cutting, Chamber will be there, Madison Eastside Business Lines will be there, and everyone who's worked so hard over the last two years.
Anyone else? Anything else?
Don't forget Election Day.
On the 9th, yes, or come and visit the staff early.
Yeah.
As, making. Then, future agenda items, we'll have some from PLAN next time, I think, based on what I've seen initially from PLAN. Anything else, Matt, that we've, normal meetings that occur?
Fire truck.
Fire truck, yes.
A couple, a consideration of, I don't know, I'll write, well, canceling the board meeting that's landing on Labor Day, but maybe with consideration to the same as we usually do to President Williams and I, if there's, to maybe have an alternate day, maybe the Tuesday following Labor Day to have a board meeting if need be, if there's a pressing agenda item. The other thing, we were just talking about, maybe scheduling a special board meeting, a workshop with elders and inviting the library board. I was thinking it might make more sense, because it would only be at that point two more people, is to do it, and Lisa won't like this, because there'll be some more coordinating, but trying to figure out a date, early-ish on in September, to have the library board, Budget Review Committee, library board. That way, we wouldn't have to spend additional money with elders, they're already coming to the workshop at that night, and Budget Review Committee has two citizen members, one of which is the library board president. So really, we're only adding one person to that potential meeting that would otherwise occur. So we can look into that date, if that sounds good. We could, technically, the board, if it's a special meeting on the board, I think we have to take action at a board meeting, so that can be on the next agenda.
Correct.
But Lisa might be sending out an email in the meantime to figure out what day works best, and if you, if you guys could respond in a way that it's not picking the best day for you, but like, which, how many days could you make work out of, out of the list? And if there's conflicts with other village meetings, maybe, we can skip or cancel a different meeting, we just kind of need to prioritize this one. That would be my suggestion.
All right, thanks, Matt. With that, then, we move right down to multiple closed sessions. So question for you, Larry, for these. We usually, there's usually not three. We usually handle these in a bundle, so I'm assuming we can do that in this case, and we just move through, you know, the focuses that we need to cover at those particular times, correct?
Yes, but let's do a reading and a vote on each one of them.
Yes, I knew you were going to say that, so I will take a stab at this, and, and it's a motion and second, each, every, in everyone. Correct. Thank you for the clarification. All right, I'd like to make a motion, then to go into closed session. A closed session is for background check for operators license application, alcohol beverage license denial from the police department. The Village of Cottage Grove Board will enter, do a closed session pursuant of Scottish State Statute 19.85, Prince V, Prince F, considering the financial, medical, social, or personal histories of, or disciplinary data of a specific person's preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of changes against specific persons except whereby par, where par B applies, which, did a lawyer write this? If it's, if it's discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any persons referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. This is a roll call vote, so we'll handle that.
Ballwig, Murphy.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Radcliffe.
Aye.
Stoa.
Ballwig, Murphy, Peterson, Radcliffe, Stoa, Valencia, Williams.
Aye. First closed sessions in session. Next up, I'll make a motion...